Good morning, it's 11:09 AM September 2nd, Tuesday morning. I decided to come on here and make a video. You know, it looks kind of hazy outside, but it's roasting hot outside. So this is one of those good days. It's kind of humid in the house, so I'm just kind of, you know, trying to get my things in order so I can get my activities done for the day. And chances are, I will be working at home. I'm gonna be on my bed, just kind of writing out some wording for a video that I'm making. But I wanted to come on here because I, you know, when I have my free time, like yesterday, I worked a little bit on my stuff, but I did have to run some errands, which kind of took me out of the house for a while. But you know, during the day, you know, of course, I have this issue constantly running through my mind. And a lot of it has to do with, you know, the anger that I feel. And of course, I would say because when you're dealing with trafficking issues, you never get the full closure that you rightfully deserve. Okay, because there's a lot of cowards hiding behind these covert operations. They use other people to speak for them, spy for them, stalk for them, present messages, you know, all of this sort of stuff that gets orchestrated by this underground network. Which I do understand, a lot of it has to do with church. I did get intuitive messages, something about the kids I used to know from high school or whatever groups of people. I don't want anybody speaking to other people on my behalf to play some sort of third-party type stuff. I am not comfortable with it. I do get the intuitive message now that people understand that I am single. I have, I want to make this very clear. Like I said, you know, I have noticed throughout the years, before I realized how deep the rabbit hole went into this whole cloning thing, I honestly, you know, I was very busy just going to work and coming home. And I always knew that the people that I would encounter always made me feel really uncomfortable. Okay, and so I believe that, you know, I just, you know, when people say that they need, they choose to do a certain life path in their life, assume that they have their reasons. If they are over the age of 18, especially if it's not in your jurisdiction, you have no right to sit here and create, you know, problems for other people. And I'm not comfortable with people participating in that sort of harassment towards me, especially since I made it very clear, I am not interested in marriage at all. Okay, and I find this kind of setup that was, people were trying to kind of gear or adrift me into, you know, I find it very, I feel as though it was like somebody putting a gun to my head and bullying me, and I didn't appreciate it. And I do not want that ever happening to me again. Now, anyway, there's certain thoughts I wanted to kind of share over. And this is really for my own therapeutic needs. Because like I said, you know, I deal with trauma. Trauma, the number one part of it is, is that this human trafficking ring took something from me that was very important. And my, but that is the years that I needed in order for me to get on my feet. Now, going back to Murray Family Farms, you know, I know I was going to school at that time. I was, I was, you know, paying my tuition through, you know, monthly payments. And I was planning on getting my, my, what do you call it? I was trying to become a CPA, right? And doing it in a way that I felt was comfortable and adjusted to my needs. And unfortunately, you know, after leaving Murray Family Farms, I had been trafficked from one place to another. I was in situations that were extremely disturbing. And the intuitive messages I get is that the fake family was, the whole fake family issue. And I know that a lot of people in the community got involved because of my fakes, my family, my siblings, like I believe my adoptive family. And I had made it so clear several times, like these people had no business being a part of my life over and over and over and over again. I kept telling people, I am the legal age of 18. Why is this continuing happening? Now, I understand that this had a lot to do with the church, right? I'm not even a part of a religion. So I talked about in my video yesterday, I think I uploaded that one, about the rules in my family's house, okay? What we were allowed to do, with age limits and certain rites and passages were already, you know, laid out for us within our family. So this is what blew me away when I found out that my siblings knew the rules of the house. So why fucking bother me? Why bother me? Okay, so I get intuitive message that Bakersfield Community is discussing me. Because it feels like, you know, I tend to be a strong focus in this community, obviously because of my background. And then the community's participation in my, and when I say the community's participation, yes, I'm aware that people in this community, regardless of their titles, knew exactly what I was dealing with. They knew exactly what I was dealing with. And this is the reason why I feel very disturbed about this illegal operation that was going on. You know, right under Harvey Hall's nose when he was there, I know Karen Go knows my issue. I think she understands now that the whole family, fake family setup was something that obviously made it so that that even reinforced my negative feelings about being a victim of human trafficking, okay? I knew now that people look at my newsletter as important. I'm not exactly sure why. Maybe it's because people regard me as the savior. But it's also that newsletter is created for me. Okay, the message I'm getting right now is something about my promotions of human targets. Okay, now, what I was hoping to do is get lists of hotels, motels, and certain industries. Like, you know, the industries that supposedly human trafficking is supposed to be mandatory in, okay? And obviously, I'm somebody who strongly believes that people should be trained in human trafficking in all industries, okay? But I have, you know, I really have not been that strong in promoting it. And I know that the reason why is because I have dealt with all kinds of opposition from, what do you call it, vigilantes and everybody else, who at this point, there are people who in the community who have looked at this issue as a game or a competition. This is not a game or a competition, okay? It is about me rightfully and justfully pushing my way to get my name across to employers and clearing up this nonsense that should have never happened in the first place. And yes, I'm angry, and yes, I feel very traumatized about what happened to me. Okay, because we had all these so-called professionals. And this is my point, I understand people were making a big issue out of my education. They were making a big issue about titles and everything like this. But they only proved themselves wrong, okay? So the intuitive messages I'm getting is that people understand that this was a deeper issue than what originally it started off as. I understand people thought they were just following out orders from their church, but their church was actually being misled by very dark forces. Meaning the whole idea, pushing this sort of ideology about, you know, inferiority. And then the narrative about what was wrong with me. There is absolutely nothing wrong with me. Okay, the intuitive messages I'm getting right now is that people felt intimidated because the forces of nature favor me, because I'm holy, that's why. The other messages I'm getting is something about, yes, people understand now. When I, when I finally, okay, because I remember I was talking about why my family should not have been involved. This is before I realized I was adopted, but I knew that my family was involved. I kept saying it over and over again, I'm over the age of 18. They are participating in human trafficking over and over and over again. Then finally, in 2023, I realized I was adopted, this still continued on. The message I'm getting right now is that I have inspired many lucrative projects, okay? And music throughout my lives, which I know that this community has basically stolen from me. And this is something I highly present. And there's something about going to the park, okay? I do believe, and maybe this is the case, okay? Because I do know there's been some upgrades in the park that's been close to my house, okay? And I'm assuming perhaps maybe, okay, something about me and perhaps maybe they funded some of the new equipment through my, maybe, possibly, okay? I did not endorse that. I did not endorse that, okay? And it was nobody's right to use any of my work for any, to appropriate my funds that I made from any of my, so I don't know how all that works, okay? And if my, if something was contributed to the city of Bakersfield, well, I don't, I didn't have any say against about that, okay? I really didn't, okay? The intuitive message I'm getting is, is that, you know, the work that I've been putting out, like trying to get customers and stuff, these people have already put me at a disadvantage. And I'm including the entire community as well as the religious groups, okay? And the reason why is because, you know, the whole issue of creating problems on platforms like Indeed and all this other stuff, okay? And then we have people who, it's very difficult, it's not easy to be able to get contact information and follow up on those contacts, especially when you may have a vigilante working in the office. So yes, they put me at a disadvantage. They put me at a, to be a targeted individual is at a disadvantage. You have to try to figure, let me explain, they isolate you. Who do I know anymore? I don't know anyone anymore, okay? And that was strategically designed by the trafficking network. I do not have anybody to call if I need help, okay? I do not, okay, I do not know anybody. Anybody that I did know was possibly a part of their network, okay? Because like I said, I was a victim of isolation and being kept in, you know, yeah, I was, yeah, isolated, right? So I don't know anybody. So it's not easy for me to sit here and introduce myself, some people, you know, try to get information, contact information. I have to work 10 times harder because of these people, okay? And the message I'm getting is, is that yes, people in this community finally understand why I'm angry. They were complying with my family, who were in cahoots with like the Ross family and all this other stuff to curmit crimes and the use of Bakersfield Community to do it, to help them. Okay, the message I'm getting right now is that I need to prepare, I understand that. I'm trying to prepare for, you know, some sort of turnaround. And I, it seems like I have to work 10 times harder because of what this trafficking network has created, okay? Meaning like, you know, I've dealt with having to look for, you know, contacts, look for certain companies, look them up. And it's very difficult, like I said, I don't know anyone. I don't know anybody. I don't know anyone, I no longer keep contact with the people that I used to know. Once people have made it very clear that they are that low to do something like this, you have to cut these kind of people off. If somebody put you in a gang stalking program, you better run from these people, okay? There is no, I'm gonna forgive you, get back with these people so that you can get caught up in your trauma, their cycle of abuse again. Because this is the only way that these people know how to communicate. This is the only way that these people know how to handle things. Because they work in an illegal operation. They don't know how to negotiate without using coercion. They do not know how to make deals or business negotiations without doing something unfair, okay? So this is the main reason why I wanted to walk away from the network. It's because it should have been a red flag when I told the community I was adopted, okay? This is, this is an obvious fact that these people are using me for my resources. The intuitive messages I get is that, yes, I win, I am free to wear. See, and this is what also angers me. How dare a community normalize the abuse of another person? How dare you? The intuitive message I'm getting is that I am a natural occultist is because I am holy. That is true. That is absolutely true. I am holy, okay? But the thing is, is that when people in this community, as well as other people who participate in gang stalking do not know, I am over the age of 18, which means I have the right to live my life how I see fit, as long as I am not outside of the guidelines of the law. Now, what I mean by that is, I'm not doing anything illegal in my life, okay? But the people who were a part of the guiding gang stalking team, they were. This is why they ended up dead, okay? Anytime we deviate from these sort of laws, these laws are, like I said, I already went into the importance of laws, okay? But these people were put in a very uncomfortable situation because it was not easy for them to untangle the web of their lies, their deceit, and everything that they put into place to get this gang stalking operation together. And the reason why is because it was illegal and improper in the first place. This is why. And so I was bringing up the conversation yesterday about when I was working over at Murray Family Farms, and I was talking about hiring and firing procedures that I created, right? Because I wanted to make sure that I operated within the guidelines of the law. And I understood that the people that I was working with had no idea of that sort of stuff, okay? So it's normal for a lot of employers to get angry at their, maybe their subordinates or whatever, and shout to them, hey, I'm gonna fire you, you're never gonna work in this city again. I knew I, the general manager that I was working with over at Murray Family Farms, he bragged about fighting people in this sort of situation. He thought it was funny, okay? And a lot of people, do you know why? Because it makes them have a sense, a false sense of power. There's a lot of people in, like these, we call them managers or whatever. A lot of people have a very distorted view of what power is. A very distorted version or view of what leadership is, okay? They just feel like you have control, and a lot of people abuse their positions of power. And that's exactly what it is. The purpose of having a manager or somebody who is a leader in the workplace is because they're supposed to lead these people, okay? In a cooperative manner, in order to gain prosperity for the company. That's it, okay? To keep, to be able to understand how to motivate people, to be able to understand what encourages people, and then also make sure that you keep people in check when it comes to their behavior. So this is one of the reasons why they have things like employee handbooks, okay? But anyway, I, you know, I know that I am no longer going to be moving to Lancaster, California. I don't know what the deal is. I know that I've expressed a need to be able to feel comfortable in my environment somewhere that I truly enjoy, okay? But life is, you know, I have done everything I could on my end. I do not believe that the church that created these problems, as well as the last network who also was a part of this problem, has done enough expediently to reverse this issue. Meaning like, you know, I feel as though I should be getting more responses by now. I feel as though my social media should be picking up by now. I feel as though things should be moving by now, and it's their fault, okay? Anyway, the intuitive messages I'm getting is something about my family. I do not have a family. The only family member that I have and I recognize is my son, Houston Gordon. That's the only family member I have. I do not recognize Diana Ross nor her children, okay? I do not, I am old, I'm over the age of 18. There was a time where I could have considered the Gordon family, meaning the remains, my siblings, okay? As well as my lover who recently passed away in 2022, okay? I used to look at them as my family, they were my adoptive family, okay? I no longer have family. That's, my son is the only family that I have, okay? I am single, okay? I'm single, and I, you know, I honestly never wanted to make a big deal out of this. I just knew that throughout the years, I went to work, I had to come home, and I always knew that I had to take care of myself, okay? I never thought or considered marriage as a way of surviving because I don't believe in gold digging, okay? And I know that I am not, you know, somebody who wants to have a relationship, okay? Why? Because I never had, first of all, my social circle has always been screwed, okay? So the only people that are gonna come into my social sphere are the people that they are associated with. Right then and there, I don't want them, okay? Another thing is, I am not somebody who is, you know, somebody who's sexually active or anything like that. So I'm somebody who just knows I need to take care of myself, period, okay? And I really, I never thought of it as a political issue or anything like that. I honestly kept thinking, okay, I need to pay these bills. I don't have anybody, my mom's too old, I can't take care of my money out of her, not that I want to anyway, okay? So the only person, I, it's just to me, I never thought of it, okay? But we had all these people on the outside making a big issue, creating sexual harassment issues. And yes, obviously, the reason why I talk about it a lot of the time, because I'm traumatized by it. I deal with trauma all the time. And the intuitive messages that I'm getting is that, yeah, another reason that bothered me is, is that the way the church used propaganda against me, it was almost as if they created so many, don't accept Marias, that it almost, I had to sit here and pick apart exactly what it was. The whole issue is, is that I am a different race than the people who are a part of my targeting network, okay? And this goes throughout several different lifetimes, all the way going back to people like King Solomon. King Solomon always had his different views against the people that he was surrounded by. Not on, not because he tried to, it's just that I was already, I was an Egyptian among different people, race of people. I'm always gonna be who I am at the end of it, okay? The intuitive message that I'm getting is, is that the community knows that I am not somebody who wants to fight, you know what I mean? And see, these people, they wanted to look at it as a competition. I am angry that somebody thought that I would even accept something like that. I, it's unacceptable to me. You know, it's barbaric, it's sick, it's rude, and it's, to me, it's like, I don't know. I don't ever think that I want to participate in anything like that, because I don't, okay? The reason why I have the right to proceed, because this is my life, okay? I've already built my life based on the things that are important to me. I don't care about the outside world, nor do I have an interest in it. At this point, I have zero interest in the outside world, okay? Because after dealing with gang stalk, you should never expect somebody to have an interest on the outside. I know, okay? And to be honest, I'm being very upfront, like I consider myself with somebody who has strong business sense, okay? I hope, you know what I mean? But it's very difficult for me to believe that I'm gonna ever be able to work with people who have the same or matched or a strong business interest, okay? Because unfortunately, I have only been in situations where I saw really bad examples, just the worst examples, okay? So right now, I'm working on a video, and it has a lot to do with customer service. And I do try to, my business is based on, you know, true professionalism, okay? It's important right now because human trafficking, things like targeted individuals, the numbers are pretty big, okay? There's a lot of people who are victims of this, okay? And so I would say that we're occupational engineering is my response to it all because I needed to get away from relying on these employment ads, okay? I don't know anybody, okay? So a trafficker who puts people in these situations, never forgive a trafficker. I don't care what, okay? I don't care, there is never any excuse to traffic another individual, and it's always abusive. So no, I will never forgive that, okay? And the complications that it creates for you, okay? The very fact that they made this a social situation, whoever had an issue with me, that was not effective. I do not play those sort of games. If you have an issue with somebody, which they had no right to have one anyway, but if they did, they should have approached me. And just like the issue of, you know, my father's apparition. Now, I don't even know all the details about my father's apparition. Like, you know, does the apparition follow behind me? Does it walk on the side of me? Does it walk a little ahead of me? Does he have the ability for, I don't, I don't know all those details, okay? I don't know all of that. But I get the intuitive message that the community honestly thought that I had control over it and that I knew about it. I just recently came to understand that. So when this whole apparition thing happened, I know it goes back to the 60s when I was with my father, right? But when it first manifested, I should have been included in that. I should have been told, you know, you know, we need to let her know about what happened. But instead, this only gave the traffickers the opportunity to use the situation by keeping it away from me, by keeping me, you know, uninformed, and instructing people to keep me out of it. They only used that to their advantage, and it was wrong, okay? I should have been informed right then and there when it happened, okay? Whether that be through a newscast, or maybe just somebody saying, hey, you know what? Put me aside, we got this on camera, what are we gonna do about it? That they should have told me about it, okay? Now, and the reason why is because I was dealing with people coming around staring at me, acting different, and then they've created some sort of narrative as if, oh, that just goes, see, she, there's something wrong with her, she's not spiritually sound, you know? And no, I am strongly spiritually sound. I mean, like, I have a very strong relationship with the divine, it's not even funny. But see, they use that to their advantage. Something about the going to the park, maybe, okay, I don't know if this is true or not. I don't care about getting confirmation. But I do, maybe it's likely that maybe the money that was made from me went to the park. You know, they're building the park, okay? And I, like I said, I'm angry about that. And the reason why I'm telling you is, is because nobody gave me the say-so as to what goes on with that. And see, right now, today is September 2nd, and I'm struggling to find a job. That Bakersfield was able to, you know, benefit from my work, but I sit here and I struggle to find a job, okay? That's bullshit, okay? The message I'm getting is something about my father's apparition, about the positive energy that my father's apparition brings. Yeah, I feel disrespected by this community, this is why I'm saying it, okay? If that's true, like I said, I'm not gonna go into meditation to confirm whether or not that's true. But it's the misappropriation of funds, okay? Here I am, 54 years old, I'm constantly worried about my retirement, right? And they decide to sit here and appropriate things that I create and the excuses that they're using. Oh, you know, we don't like, you know, she smokes marijuana, or she believes in this, and she does that. We don't like the way she dresses, okay? If I'm such a shit person, don't take anything from me. So the message I'm getting is something about my family. I don't know who, what, which family, was it the adoptive family or the Ross family, or the combination of both? But Bakersfield Community, you were completely wrong. You were completely wrong to do what you did, okay? So if that equipment that was purchased for that park, I don't really care about it, okay? You go ahead and use it, okay? But when you're on that equipment, you know, if that's the case, if I paid for it, you should have more respect for me. And the message I'm getting right now is something about spirits in the clouds, okay? Some of these people who did this are dead, okay? They had no right to sit here and build their reputations based on my things. And it's not about selfishness, okay? Because I'll tell you what, if I cared about certain individuals, I would umbrella them into my life. I would always share the things that I care about if I invited them in, okay? I never invited anybody into any of my endeavors. I feel completely 100% violated, okay? The intuitive messages I'm getting is, you know, when I'm going to the library, I go to the library sometimes, sometimes, you know, when it comes to just writing articles and stuff like that, I can do that on my bed. But there's certain things that relate specifically to work, I cannot do this in the house, okay? Because I personally feel so disturbed by just anything related to work based on the abuse that I received, okay? Like I said, I feel it's offensive to me for people to take what I did and donate it to the city of Bakersfield. That's offensive to me, especially knowing something about childhood inspires me about being forever young. That is not something I should be punished for. See, these people wanted to have any reason to punish me. Why is that a bad thing in people's eyes? I'm trying to understand, there's no, there's no reason why it should be. If I am not somebody who genetically has run into my age limit, okay? Personally, I look at myself, I can tell that I'm older, I can see it, okay? But yes, do I look older, younger than 50 something years old? Yeah, a lot of people think so, okay? But that is just my genetics, that's genetics, okay? So I don't really, you know, and the other message I'm getting is, you know, I'm not somebody who's interested in fighting, okay? I lose respect for people. People who participated in this thing, I immediately lose respect for you. I lose respect for you, right? So no, I'm not honored, and if that's the case about Bakersfield stealing from me to give to their own community and then leave me to sit here and be struggling, the message I'm getting is, is understandable that I'm single. Because something about me being single, so therefore you steal from me so you feel like I don't have any right to make a decision? The message I'm getting is something about childhood inspiring me, being forever young. You know, I'm angry about that, okay? I'm angry about the injustices that Bakersfield took, these liberties, against my will, okay? Something about my father's apparition, something about heaven, and me working on my projects because of the forces of nature, I would be, okay? I'm gonna tell you right now, I did not endorse that donation of the church, okay? I did not, okay? As a matter of fact, I am very angry with the city of Bakersfield, okay? I feel very disrespected by the things that they do. The very fact that I'm sitting here without a job and I have to struggle to try to look for, you know, contacts, and I have to go, everything I have to do is extra all because of these wicked people. Yes, wicked people, I'm gonna call the city of Bakersfield wicked, okay? That includes all the people who thought it was okay, it's not okay, okay? Something about my, the energy, something about the conservatives changing some of their mindsets. I know that conservative people were attacking me, they had no right to attack me. Something about me having an attachment to marijuana. Did I ever go around like telling people to smoke marijuana or, but see, the little unfair about this issue is, these people targeted me. They highlighted everything that I did. They went out of their way to sit here and, whatever the case is, city of Bakersfield, you did not respect me. You showed no respect for me whatsoever. The other message I'm getting is, I am at peace with all the alien races on earth and in the hereafter. Great, okay? But I need to figure out with Bakersfield, okay? I'm tired of the unnecessary struggle that you created for me. If you did take my work and donate it to the park, I am not flattered. I am very angry about it, okay? The message I'm getting is, is that, yes, Bakersfield knows that they're wrong, okay? And this is what, done on the instruction of one of my families, whether that be the adoptive family or the Ross family, they had no right to do that. None, okay? So I don't sit here and endorse what you did to the park. I would never use any of that equipment anyway, okay? But I'm just saying is, whatever, okay? It's basically you taking my resources and giving it to other people, that's bullshit. Especially when you had no right to do so. The message I'm getting is, I have inspired many lucrative projects. Yes, I have, okay? And you've stolen some from me, okay? And this community knows it, they know it, okay? They know it. So I'm gonna tell you right now, Bakersfield, I would appreciate it if you would stop trying to have a link. Like I talked about the customer service, you have abused me entirely too much, and it's not something I forgive. And now, once again, I'm getting this message about the spirits in the clouds. I know there's a lot of clouds right now, there's a lot of weird stuff going on with the weather, okay? But there's a lot of people who are in woe and very much sorrow for the crap that they created for me, okay? And no, like I said, I do not find it an honor, I do not, I don't find any of the things that Bakersfield has done for me as an honor, okay? I feel as though it's a disrespect, I feel disrespected by it, okay? I feel very, very disrespected by it. The other message I'm getting is, is that... The other message I'm getting is, is that, um, something about politicians, okay? And I did, I did reach out to city council, I did do that. Um, but I, I, I have to say, you know, when it comes to city council, they should have known better, okay? City council did a lot of things, because if, if this is true, okay? Like I said, I don't wanna say or confirm, but I'm just speculating. If what that was made from me, from my work, okay? Knowing that I was dealing with job issues, I even ended up losing my car over this, okay? Because of these people preventing me from working so that they could obtain things from me and donate it to the community. That is wrong, okay? And like I said, there's a bunch of dead people because of this, a bunch, and I can't name them. It's just certain people that I must, that must have been involved in this, that I was, I may have been aware of some of them and not all of them. But a lot of people did a lot of bad stuff, did a lot of bad stuff. And yeah, I am angry because now I'm dealing with the aftermath of their stuff. And Bakersfield community, I'd like to know, city council, what exactly are you doing on my behalf? The message I'm getting is, something about my fake family, you knew the fake, the fa- and I'm saying this with all due respect, city council, okay? I'm trying to untangle this web, okay? I know unfortunately, I have to sit here and take care of myself. I have to sit here and figure out how I'm going to take care of myself, how I'm gonna pay for my bills. I do not think the arrangement of my son living with me for the rest of his life is fair or just. I did not get treated fairly on this issue. Also, when it comes to me working at, I was going to school trying to become a CPA. People kept, you know, diverting me from all of my stuff, giving me a job here lasting maybe a few months, whenever. I was stalked constantly, dealing with people's rude, ignorant, intrusive, inappropriate comments. I don't really appreciate it, I find it offensive, okay? So I've dealt with all of this and then how does the city of Bakersfield thank me? By stealing my stuff and then donating it to their community. Is this what I get? If, if that's true, like I said, city council and all, like I said, with all due respect, Karen Go, that needs to be fixed. The intuitive message I'm getting is something about the alien race, people in the community are at peace, I'm not at peace, okay? Now, you're constantly thinking about you guys' comfort, okay? But yet, I'm somebody who has social anxiety and all kinds of problems. Can I address city council again, okay? Something about my, my father's apparition, I don't know anything about it. Something about me being, yes, I have the right to smoke marijuana, it's legal, okay? And yes, this whole issue about, you know, me having, associating, I, I wouldn't say associating, okay? But apparently something about the church created some sort of discussion about me having some sort of, uh, interest in beings that share and occupy this space with other deceased souls, okay? And yes, they do, okay? And yes, these people, these particular entities or, or whatever are actually benevolent entities that, that, you know, float around within the heavenly sphere, okay? They're not evil, okay? There's nothing that says you're not supposed to ever talk to them, okay? So I've never done anything wrong. But what it is, is that we have people who come from different backgrounds or particular beliefs who have been envious of the, the abilities that I've had for a very long time. So they wanna sit here and say, well, you can't do that with my own spiritual gifts. Like I said, this come, this is deeply seated in racism, okay? So, and like I said, I, I sent messages to city council and I was being very respectful. I still wanna continue to be respectful. But if I'm letting you understand, okay? I feel abused by city council, by the city of Bakersfield, obviously by my family. If that park, the, the improvements of that park were created with my money, I'm going to tell you that I am not flattered or honored by it, in fact, I find it offensive, okay? Why? Because I sit here and struggle without a vehicle and like, and I'm gonna tell you, I don't really mind taking the bus. I don't mind walking, I really don't, I actually enjoy that, okay? Cause back in the day, that's all I ever did, okay? But I understand, I still need a vehicle, okay? And quite frankly, I was tired of paying that six hundred dollars a month with the car payment as well as the making sure that I have full coverage insurance. But at the same time, I still deserve, I still should have been paying on my car payment, okay? York City put me in, put me in a financial bind, okay? Had no right to touch my credit cards, okay? And the message I'm getting is, is because of the weed issue, okay? Like I said, when something becomes legal, that means it's no longer something that somebody's supposed to pay a price for, okay? It's no, it's, it's, it's now put in a class where they should be protected among anything else. It's not debatable anymore, okay? Like I said, people have their personal preferences, okay? But now it's a law, okay? So it's just an excuse, I'm tired of it, I'm tired of it, okay? Especially since, you know, if, if I smoke marijuana, it's not like I'm smoking it at the job place or anything like that. So it's bullshit, it's bullshit, okay? Like I said, I feel as though, and this, I'm addressing this to city council, okay? Um, and I'm being respectful, okay? I really am being respectful, okay? I just feel as though, you know, I have been waiting too long for this issue to get cleared up, okay? Something about customer service, I did touch lightly on this, on an article that I, a small little article that I wrote, okay? Um, it's the September, um, specials with offers. I talk about it because there has been times where I, I know, okay? I know for a fact, okay? If you're a targeted individual or a victim of human trafficking, I know a lot of times they use places that too frequent to target you, okay? And I wanna make sure I don't have to deal with human trafficking again. But I think it's important that business owners know that their employees could very well be assisting stalkers, cause that's exactly what it is. And if you are assisting stalkers and that includes being rude, not being attentive to your customer, you know, all that other stuff, you need to understand that that's going on. But I think it's important for business owners to have this discussion with their, um, employees because it's not just something under the title of human trafficking. It could be the kind of stalking where a guy is interested in a girl and he's sitting here asking questions, okay? And the next thing you know, your employees help, okay? But you don't know if that dude is normal. He could be a full-on weirdo stalker that's sitting here trying to kill you. So this is what I'm saying, this is what I'm saying, okay? To me, it's like if I was a business owner, okay? Like a fully functional business owner where I had people working and stuff like that underneath me, I would talk to them about these things, you know why? Because I don't want my name associated with a big genocide issue. Human trafficking is big, okay? And we all know that this whole issue that, you know, I talked about the Elon Musk issue with all the people who were involved in all of that, that scares a lot of people, that scares a lot of people, okay? The very fact that, you know, these employers are taking more control over people's lives and invading their personal space, arranging marriages, doing all kinds of bullying tactics, stepping over that line. Okay, they stepped over that line, okay? That they should have never done. You know, I just, I wanted to find this article, I forgot the name of the person. And at the time, I kept thinking, you know, I should take a snippet of this and put it in my newsletter. And I'm gonna try to find it, I don't remember the guy's name, I think his last name starts with G U something, okay? And he could have been writing this from a Mormon perspective, but he was basically talking about CEO work-life balance. It was an article that he wrote and it was talking about, you know, the family and how, you know, if his wife isn't, the wives, they're teaching the corporate culture, that if the wife isn't acting right, then we're gonna leave and leave her in a state of financial destitution, okay? And I saw this, I saw this, and he's supposed to be apparently a big writer. I wish I remembered him, I'm gonna be searching like this, this, for that article like a mad dog, okay? But I kept thinking, and I've been reading other things like this, and this is what tipped me off, that there is some sort of underground Christian agenda that should not be going on. And like I said, it's okay if people wanna instruct their churches, church members to behave in that sort of context. Like for example, if, you know, everybody has different jobs in this particular church congregation and there's a preacher and the preacher, maybe they have a certain, uh, what do you call it, dress code within their congregation that they believe and that's what they, then that's what they should do. If they, they're not allowed to wear, uh, you know, uh, certain kind of clothes or women can't wear makeup, if they, if women can't do certain things because it's a part of their religion, then that's a lifestyle that they chose to adhere to. But they do not have the right to inflict that on other people. Okay, the message I'm getting right now is that, um, people recognize that I'm a very high level spiritually powered individual. Also, um, okay, and I personally feel is, like I said, this issue, I'm putting it on the responsibility of clearing the air onto city council, why? Because this, if, I will tell you, if I was a part of city council or if I had a strong, um, presence, like a mayor or something like that, and I knew that this was going on in my community, you best believe I'd be on it. You best believe I'd be on it, that would not be going on. I mean, I know you can't get rid of all of it, but you best believe I'd be very active about getting rid of it, okay? Because this is a form of genocide and it should not be going on. And I'm offended, and like I said, the whole park thing, the whole dedication, if, if, especially if, if that thing is true, if that park is true, whether you took my money and donated it to the funds and there was no plaque, there was no acknowledgement, if that was true, then that's nothing but disrespect. Something about spell work, I don't think people try, have performed spell work onto me before. There's like, like videos talking about this, right? Um, I, let me just see what's going on, okay? Something about my life is supposed to be getting better, okay? Um, you know what? It's, you know, some people say, oh, your life is good, good, okay? Cause really, I, I'm not like, you know, I'm not suffering physically, okay? I suffer mentally, I have a lot of mental problems, okay? Um, because of this. And, um, okay, yes, I did reach out to politicians. I am not somebody who's focused on building social media and I just remembered that I had a Instagram account. I don't know why I forgot all about it, cause I know I talked about creating a Twitter account and all this other stuff, okay? The thing is, the only kind of connection, and I'm not saying that my, the people who connect with me on Facebook are not important. I appreciate that, okay, I do, okay? But when it comes to business, I'm somebody who has to, I, I am responsible for finding my own clients, okay? And like I'm telling, you know, city council, that that made it very difficult to do because of the poison of people like my family and, and stupid people participating in their stupid game, okay? Which made it difficult for me to be able to communicate, I don't know anyone in this community, okay? So, um, yeah. Also, uh, I would have never endorsed, I'm angry because if that was my Patreon money or some other project that was used to fund the park, okay? I'm upset about it, because like I said, that was when that time that I was doing that, I was not working. I was trying, I was, I was aware of the fact that my unemployment was running out at that time. I was doing everything I could work to do work and then also, uh, I knew I needed to pay my credit cards and everything else, okay? And you guys took that opportunity away from me. So I'm tired of, of suffering for what this community did, you know? And this is why I get up at night and I get upset, I get nervous, I get, you know, stressed out because I, and I'm gonna be quite frank, frank, you know, when it just comes to Karen Go and the rest of, um, Bakersfield community. And like I said, I'm being very respectful. I do not believe that you're working hard enough, I don't believe that you're working hard enough and I need to see results, thank you. I'm saying this with, you know, being very, very respectful when I say this. And I will say that it's not easy to deal with human trafficking and, and learning how to resolve the issue because it's like a wild, it could be like a wildfire, okay? But I'm going to tell you, there's been a lot of people who have been in businesses who have been instructed to participate in it. I need you, city council, to make sure that everybody stops it, okay? When it comes to customer service, I will be creating a video about customer service. I'm, I'm, I wanna cover a couple of different industries, okay? And it's not necessarily related to gang stalking. First of all, people should be focused on customer service anyway. What, what stands out as a red flag is when you are a target, um, a targeted individual, why? Because oftentimes stalkers use customer service representatives to stalk other people. Yes, they do, okay? And so this is what Bakersfield employers need to know, what your employees are doing, what kind of emails do they send? What are they doing with those company phones? You need to know, you need to know. Cause I will tell you, if I, if I, and I, okay, I am kind of a business owner, but I really haven't got the ball rolling yet. And if I did, like I said, if I had employees, you best believe I'm gonna know what they're doing with my company, my company property, what you're doing with my company name. You will not dis- disrespect my company name, you will not bring reproach on my company name, okay? Not without any sort of consequences. Now, like I said, I know that blacklisting is illegal, okay? But there are certain people in certain positions that once they screw up that bad, they do not, I, I can't sit there and say that they deserve to be blacklisted because blacklisting is illegal, okay? But they should never be considered in front of a management position, they, they should not, they just shouldn't, okay? Because obviously, let me tell you something, there is nothing that you should ever say, say here and act like an excuse for committing a genocide, there is no excuse for it, none, okay? So some people have been wondering, you know, am I going to be getting into, involved in politics? And I get this feeling, like I constantly keep getting intuitive messages and as well as like some of my alien card readings and stuff, I get this feeling that a lot of people think I should be. But the thing is, is that, you know, I accept myself for the Bohemian views that I have. And I, uh, this is who I am, okay? I don't really have an interest in the outside world, okay? I under- I understand that I have to live in it, okay? I try very hard like to, um, you know, give my views and give backup to, uh, on my videos and I, you know, address like for example Donald Trump and the rest of the White House when I feel as though something is important, okay? But I have never saw myself, uh, as somebody who was like, you know, a formal type title, okay? But I will tell you, if I did have one of those titles, you best believe I would be working overtime to get rid of human trafficking. And see, I would say that the moral reset is important, why? Because this is how I live my life. I live my life based on, you know, the guidelines of the law, okay? And yes, I do have a spirituality, but I also understand my spirituality is specifically mine and it's also something that I believe, uh, you know, religion, the, the freedom of, I believe in the freedom of religion. So I don't sit here and tell people what they're supposed to think. I don't sit here and downgrade people because they believe something else or whatever, you know what I mean? I'm angry that I even got brought into this subject, that this even happened. That's some, you know, that I was cloned in the first place, you know what I mean? I'm so angry at these cloning operations and I know they've been going on for a very long time. I get the intuitive message that cloning is so easy now, like, you know, I get the feeling that people can do that in your, your garage. I'm not kidding, okay? Like you can literally, if you know how. Now, I don't know all, I don't know how to do that, I really don't. But it's, you know, if you think about it, it's been going on for quite a long time. This, if you haven't trained properly, it's, it shouldn't be that big of a deal. And yes, you probably could, you know, create humans in your, in your, your garage, okay? But it's, it's a bad idea, okay? Um, anyway, what else do I wanna talk about? That's for now, you know, I felt as though I needed to get this off my chest, um, I do deal with a lot of, um, okay, wait. The intuitive message I'm getting right now is about people are talking about me. And something about my customer service video, yes, I'm making a customer service video. Kind of jumping off and, and expanding what I talked about in my newsletter, my little small newsletter that I sent with Gordon's occupational engineering. It is because I have dealt with customer service representatives, for example, the bus number forty-five, okay? Like I said, you know, it, and the weird part about the Get Bus, okay? And I haven't, I had any problem with Get Bus since then. What I'm saying is, Get Bus was, uh, driving around with some buses that actually had a poster of, about human trafficking, okay? Now, like I said, maybe the human tra- there was just sponsor, maybe that's just a sponsor type relationship or whatever. But I understand that human trafficking is something that was supposed to be trained in transportation industries. I would think that Get Bus is a transportation industry, okay? And by stalking an individual or singling somebody out, that's a part of what targeting does or stalking is, okay? So I had to bring it to their attention that this is what they were doing, okay? You don't make special accommodation or, or, uh, do or stalk for other people. For example, maybe bus forty-five got a message saying, oh, well Maria Gordon, do not pick her up because, you know, she's wearing an outfit and I don't like it. Okay, the thing is, I'm fully clothed, I have the right to wear what I wanna wear. And yes, bu- bus forty-five, they were providing a public service, no one else should have to suffer because, and mind you, I was at the bus stop by myself. The point is, is that you're targeting a person, okay? You're targeting a person and you are participating in human trafficking for the target, for the, for the trafficker. So you have to constantly, uh, remind people of what human trafficking looks like. And I understand that if, if the people in, um, the Get Bus, right? The Get, Get Bus station, assuming that they receive human trafficking training, is it not sufficient enough? Because that's exactly what they're doing, that's what it is, okay? It's these small little components, okay? It's, it's, it's not just people getting smuggled, sometimes it is, but a lot of it involves stalking at the, on behalf or saying things on behalf of that person, you know what I mean? Or maybe denying a person of service based on what the trafficking network does or trying to control of a person. I get the feeling of that too, okay? Whatever the case is, I'm trying to move on with my life, I'm asking city council to get on it, get on it. You, I mean, and I'm, I'm saying this with all due respect, okay? But you guys have connections to businesses here in, in Bakersfield. You know, you know, people, I don't know anybody. I have been isolated for quite a long time, over twelve years, and the people that I used to know, I no longer know. And at this point, I no longer trust, I no longer trust, okay? So I do get intuitive messages, a lot of people from my high school who wanna connect with me. Like I said, you heard me screaming, crying at the top of my nuns devastated, shocked as hell when I found out this was not my family. I mean, honestly, and you were sitting there being a part of it, think about it, that's very disturbing. The message I'm getting right now, um, I, I work on my work when I work on my work, okay? So I try to, you know, be consistent, there's times where I'm like, okay, you know, whatever. I know my, how to take care of my work schedule, yes, I'm gonna be working on my customer service video. Yes, it's important that business owners know that their, their employees are doing illegal stuff on their business hours, okay? And like I said, I've known that there's been some companies too, some business contacts, okay? Like for example, I'll have a, 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 this is an example, okay? I'll have a, a, a scheduled appointment to have a job, um, job interview with a specific, specific company. And then they will call me or arrange or send me a text message on their per- and then they will call me or ring or send me a text message on their personal phone. What is wrong with that? If you are calling or dealing with anything business related that needs to be handled on the company phone, period. Because they need to know who their, what their clients are, the clients that they're communicating with and all that sort of stuff. So right then and there, that sets a red flag to me. Um, and then also, you know, you should not be communicating with your personal email to clients or using your company type, uh, email, phones, whatever for personal stuff, okay? Everything should be appropriated in, you know, in its proper little slot, okay? Uh, and there's reasons for that, okay? And I'll go into it in, in more of my informer videos. But yeah, it's important for me to, you know, let people know that, yes, you know, it's important because human trafficking is a big issue, big issue. And you do not want your business associated with it. I, you know, and the reason why is because human trafficking is an, is, is an admission that you do not respect the privacy of others. It is an admission of saying that we exploit individuals. Why would I wanna be a customer in a data bank, right? That exploits other people, that stalks other people. You know what I would think? If my name was in a customer data bank of a particular company that stalks employees and does this all this stuff, how do I know that you're not gonna do the same stuff with me, okay? You lose credibility when you associate or allow yourself to be identified with any form of human trafficking, gang stalking, i.e. all of that stuff relates to, uh, Martin J. genocide, okay? So my point is, is that a lot of business owners do not know because they're not actively engaged in what their employees are doing or not really knowledgeable about it, okay? But this is what's been going on, okay? So anyway, I have things to do, I do wanna finish my video sometime by this week and I will be sending that out as well. Um, as far as city council, you know, um, I would appreciate it if you worked a little bit more to clear up this issue. Like I said, I haven't dealt with anything just recently, but I know that I feel as though, you know, I should not have to work that hard to look for a job. Especially, especially after everything that happened. And like I said, if that park has been, you know, upgraded at my expense, this should've been handled a long time ago, okay? I know I am, I'm extremely offended by it, I feel completely, uh, I'm outraged about it actually, if that's the case. And I don't want confirmation, okay? Because it, like I said, your, your, your community has disrespected me long enough, okay? And I'm tired of this lab, this, this complete lag. Mind you, even though I want the lag to resolve itself, I don't, you know, it's difficult for me to really feel excited about going back to work because of this issue. I hope that this issue does get cleaned up. Um, I'm gonna leave this with city council, you know what I mean? And I do appreciate you listening to my video, I'm rocking this one out, take care, bye.